Welcome to the June 20th meeting of the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, our first application is Leonard Getz of 23 Bradford Avenue in Situate, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 40A, Section 6 and/or Section 8, 10.2 of the bylaw for relief so the board may grant the right to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 23 Bradford Avenue. And he is increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent. If you want to come up here and tell us what you're up to.
I would like to raise and reconstruct my residence, built originally around 1912. The house has the thermal envelope qualities of a tent, and I'd like to build a modern, more energy-efficient and handsomer home.
You're asking a lot.
Yes.
So it looks like a lot area in frontage, which you can't really do much about, and then you've got the front setback, which you're actually coming further back from the street, right?
I would push back from the average of the two adjacent homes that have frontage on Bradford Avenue.
Yeah, the current setback average is 23.3, so he's going to the...
He's actually going to make it conforming.
Uh huh, according to the plan.
Look at that. Brian?
I've got nothing to say.
Before us, because the bylaw requires it if you're increasing more than 20 percent.
Correct.
And also because you are a pre-existing non-conforming lot of 5,000 square foot and a 10,000 square foot zone, and a 50-foot frontage and 100-foot frontage zone, neither which you can do anything about.
Correct.
Other than that, you're asking to do something that's completely conforming with the bylaws in terms of setbacks, sidelines, rear, front, or average front and height.
I'd agree. Anything else? Probably the most statements of fact.
Just statements of fact?
I like it.
It's to clarify for the public.
No, I'm...
We actually are reviewing what we're...
Yes, I know, this one seems pretty easy because it's pretty straightforward, but...
It might be a neighbor who has it in his ear.
Yeah, you're... We... The bylaw was changed to require an increase, require a finding if there's going to be an increase in floor area greater than 20 percent. And that's, that change in the bylaw is what brings you in front of the board, but other than that...
Correct.
Everything that you propose to do will be conforming. And then sometimes if you have an area where the homes are closer together, which is the case in Sand Hills, people want to come out and, or people are curious as to what's taking place, they want to come to the hearing to hear what's being proposed, and it's always better to kind of flush things out into the open rather than to be served with a lawsuit from a neighbor who might not be well-informed or fully informed, you know, the day you're going to apply for your building permit. So are there any, any abutters here that have any questions? Mr. Getz, you appear to have very good relationships with your neighbors.
I try, sir.
Bob, what do we...
Yeah, please.
Well, a question for you, and then definitely anything else you've got. They'll 50-foot buffer there in the rear. What do we... What can you tell us about that?
Well, this project is going to need to go through a few other boards before it can be accomplished. The first would be historical. I don't know if you've touched base with them, but if the building's over 100 years old, it may, it may well not be significant, and it probably isn't, but they have to rule that it's not, otherwise there's a demolition delay by law while they search for some alternative to demolish it. I don't think you're going to have much trouble with that, but it's a box, but that needs to be checked. You'll need an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and that will include a stormwater solution, so to speak, stormwater irradiation design. And then because the house is partially in an AE zone, or actually the house is partially in AE zone, FEMA and the State Building Code have requirements that you're going to have to adhere to as well, in terms of elevation, in terms of paperwork, something called an elevation certificate.
Correct.
You know, one based on the drawings, and then a second one done at the end to confirm that that elevation was achieved. So just have that in mind generally. If you wanted to come into the office next week, we could, I can sort of walk you through some of this if you need to.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, give them all, and we'll set some up.
We'll work Friday.
Not Friday, yeah.
We're upstairs, upstairs at the lobster pot tomorrow.
So one more question. That, that shed in the back is currently 7.7?
Yes.
And now the, the structure that, or the new shed will be 8?
We're going to move the shed that's there to be 8 and 8.
Okay, right. Bob, did you have anything else?
No, that was my, that was my list.
Very good. All right, with that.
Moved to find that the proposed raise and reconstruction will not significantly, is not significantly detrimental to the neighborhood.
As proposed on the plan of...
Seven-hour consulting dated 5/10/19. Entitled, "Proposed Site Plan for 23 Bradford Avenue, Situate."
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Here we go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next application is Richard and Karen Ross of 578 Heatherly Road, requesting a special permit finding under 48 Section 6 and 8, 10.2 of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of an addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 578 Heatherly Road, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Maravito from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner and applicant, Richard and Karen Ross. The applicant owns the existing house shown on the plan in brown. The property lines are outlined in yellow. The only non-conforming aspect of the property is the lot frontage, which is only 87 feet, and the lot width, which is less than 100 feet as well. The existing structure shown in brown currently meets all of the required setbacks. The proposed addition, which is shown in blue, will be a one-story addition, and that will meet the required setbacks as well. The side yard setback is eight feet, and it's proposed to be 9.9 and 10 feet. That results in a gross floor, a gross floor area increase of 83 percent. There's no other changes to the land itself. Everything else that you see on the plan will remain as it is. It is not in the town of Situate floodplain. The increase in impervious area was 17 percent, which is well under the 25 percent threshold, so there's no stormwater mitigation requirements under the stormwater bylaw. I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
All right.
Paul, it's, it's kind of curious, the, the way the addition is put on there. Do you have any renderings of what it's going to look like?
Yes.
I'd just be curious to see, I mean, it, obviously, your, the frontage is unchanged pre and post. I just, it's, you know, the, architecturally, the house is, is attractive, certainly more so than when your customers have bought it, but I'm just wondering what it's going to look like.
It's a pretty simple addition, Brian. This is what we'll look at from the front. I wasn't trying to present anything, but I'm glad I had to show it to you.
I'm just...
This is what you'll see from the street, and this is the existing house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, it's really nice what they've done. Thanks.
It's basically a master bedroom.
That's great. It's a nice neck of the woods. So there's, again, the only change is the addition, but there's no, there are no encroachments, there's no intensification. The, of the non-conformity, the non-conformity is unchanged.
Which is the lot width and the lot frontage.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Ed?
Nope.
Bob?
Paul, you said the addition was to be a new master bedroom?
I, well, I believe so.
Because if there's a change in the number of bedrooms, then...
No, he's, no, he's not going to have an increase in bedrooms.
Okay. Well, that will have to be discussed with the board of health at some point.
They just may reconfigure the, the layout within the house, so it's three and four, three bedrooms pre...
Yeah, no, I know, that's, that's done, you know, quite often, but no, none of the documents three I'm in front of us were telling me about. So the board of health will go on a way anyway. I'm struck by the note on the plan, leaching trench in cesspool.
Ah!
Okay.
Cesspools are, can be legal under Title V.
Yeah. Again, another box to be checked, that's all.
Fortunately, that's not a...
It's not a zoning issue.
It's not our, our whole of...
I know, I get it.
Of... He's aware of that, Bob, and they are going to take measures to not have an increase in the number of bedrooms.
It is a nine-bedroom house, according to the assessors.
Is it really?
Nine-bedroom?
Well, and presumably, if it was transferred in '03, it has to pass Title V at that time.
Yeah. But two bathrooms, so in my family, that would be a traffic jam.
No, in the chaos...
It's not the number of seats you sit in, it's the number of sets...
On the assessor's field card? Sloppy fingers on the keypad, maybe it might be that one.
No, I see it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that's a number of states, whether...
Do we, anyone from the audience have any questions or comments? No? All right. With that, do we have a motion?
Moved to find that the proposed addition is not significantly detrimental to the neighborhood, nor will it extend or create any new non-conformities.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll do that one too.
Thank you. Look at you.
Sure enough, I'm on vacation, you guys...
We do have six.
You guys, you know, that's going to say.
Yeah.
So that's two apiece.
Our third application, Richard, you've got some councils here. Richard McLaren of 54 Manlot Road in Situate requests a special permit finding under 48 Section 6 and 8, 10.2 of the bylaw for the relief necessary to allow the construction of additions to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 54 Manlot Road, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent.
How's it going?
Good. Good evening. Greg Morse, Morse Engineering for the record, representing the property owner, Rich McLaren at 54 Manlot Road. As was just read into the record, this is a request for a finding in accordance with Section 8, 10 of your bylaw to allow an expansion of greater than 20 percent at this single-family home. This is Mr. McLaren's childhood home, he's purchased it from his parents, and they're looking to put an addition on. The addition is primarily taking the roof off the house and adding a second level to it. The lot itself is a non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area, frontage, and lot width. This is in the R2 zoning district. The structure, the existing house, was built in 1927. It's non-conforming with respect to the right side yard setback at 7.6 feet. The proposal, again, is to add a second story to this house. You'll also see we're taking an existing deck and adding a porch over that deck, but that is within the setbacks. If you look at the floor areas, the existing floor area is approximately 2,000 square feet. As proposed, it would bring the house to a total of 3,184, which represents a 59.2 percent increase. We're not, we're not creating any new non-conformities or reducing any of the existing non-conformities.
Ed?
Similar to the last application, pre and post, there are no changes to the non-conformities. There is an intensification inasmuch as you've got one story with an encroachment, now you're going to have two stories with an encroachment, but it's minimal at best, and there's really no place else for your, for Mr. McLaren to go. So I think it's, I think it's great that he was able to buy his childhood home and expand on it as he sees fit.
Agreed, and we want to keep him there, too.
Oh, great.
Bob, got anything for us?
No, we should note that the number of bedrooms are going to increase, and a new septic system was recently installed. That is designed to take the new number of bedrooms, so that box is checked.
No cesspool.
Nine, nine bedrooms now?
Yeah.
I don't know, actually. I just know that the lot's been dug up for quite a long time doing the septic work. Excuse me. Conservation's going to be consulted, I'm sure, but they'll, they'll judge this because there's no increase in the footprint and really no, unless something's got to be done to beef up the footings in that, in that deck porch area, there's really not much of a shovel in the ground, and so that should be a non-then. So I think everything looks good.
All right. Anyone from the audience? If you could just raise your hand and state your address, just for the record, if you do have something. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Sandy Whiting, and I live at 57 Manlot Road, right across the street from Rich and his wife Michelle. And this is my first meeting ever.
Welcome.
Hey, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
And you're smiling. You should come back.
It doesn't happen, which is the way I'm thinking this is going.
Welcome, anytime.
I want very much to see the kids do what they want to do. It only is going to better my property across the street, and I don't want to see them leave. And so I thank you for the way it sounds.
Thank you. Thanks for your attendance.
So you're pushing for three no votes?
[laughing].
All right. Anyone else? All right. Do we have a motion?
Moved to find that the proposed addition, as presented by Greg Morse and the plan of Morse Engineering dated May 13th, 2019, to put a second story on the present single-family dwelling at 54 Manlot Road, will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and...
Creating any new non...
And, yeah, and will not create any new non-conformities.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I can do that.
Greg, when you went in front of Concom for your septic system...
Yes.
Did, did they know that you were...
No, we weren't proposing the addition at the time, and it was just the septic.
I'll get that one, Sue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come back.
Okay.
We're here every Thursday. It's free.
It was fun.
Maybe, maybe not here in July, but we'll get to that.
Yes.
That's true. Did we have an application? No.
All right. Our fourth application, Arthur McLaren Jr. of 22 Industrial Boulevard in Hanson, requests a special permit finding under 48 Section 6 and 8, 10.2, and Section 470.6F of the bylaw for the relief necessary to allow the construction of a third floor to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 56 Oceanside Drive in Situate, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Maravito from Ross Engineering Company. I'm representing the applicant for this project, Arthur McLaren. Just by way of history, Mr. McLaren bought the house a few years ago, the number 56 Oceanside Drive, and he applied to Conservation Commission to be allowed to elevate the house up onto concrete piers in order to meet the new FEMA elevation requirements. That work has been completed. The purpose of this application is that he is asking to add a third floor to the house, which will increase the gross floor area by 83 percent. That blue line is the outline of the third floor addition. There's an existing in the photographs. We show, looking from the street, there's a lower level here, it's part of the main dwelling. In the back, there's a small deck, and he's proposing to take off the existing roof that has the third floor and put a new roof over it. He's not increasing the impervious area on the property, there's no grade changes. All of the work would be done from the second floor up. The non-conformity for that lot is the lot area and the lot width.
And the frontage?
Yes.
And the side yard setback?
Yes.
And then the finished height will be?
It'll be 35 feet, it'll be 35 feet or less from the eve to the midpoint of the distance between the eve and the peak of the roof.
It'll be conforming?
It'll be conforming.
There we go.
John, John Queen was a structural engineer, and he prepared those plans for the third floor as well. And I have spoken to the building department, Bob and Neil, about this, and the plan will both show that it does conform when it's timely filed for the building permit.
Ed?
Excuse me, thank you for your letters.
We're going to get to you in just one second, absolutely.
As long as it conforms in height, I don't, we're not changing anything other than height.
That's all I saw.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it's, it's, you know, pre and post, nothing changes other than they're adding another story on, but there are no new encroachments, there are no, there's no reduction in any of the encroachments, it's just increase in floor area.
The other permit we're asking for is a special permit under Section 470.6F 1, 2, and 3. The portion of the site is in the town of Situate floodplain district, and this represents an increase of more than 25 percent of the structure.
Bob, if you have anything, and then also, one, because I ask you to do this every time we run up against height, but also since I think it might be useful for the audience to hear, can you just quickly run through for us the height cap, which was just mentioned, but where that counting starts and how it works under the code?
Sure.
Thank you.
I had the same question about height, and so we'll certainly be very cognizant of that when the permit set comes in. So the height is capped at 40 feet maximum to the ridge in a residential zone, or 35 feet to a point halfway between the eaves, where the gutters would normally be a typical pitch roof house, and the ridge, so halfway up the roof, 35 feet. There is a, another wrinkle that was put into the zoning bylaws by way of a definition change a couple of years ago that would allow an increase in that 40 feet, but it does not apply to this case. It's only if you're elevating to meet FEMA and code requirements in existing house, and by doing so, you would exceed that 40 feet, then you have leeway, but you cannot change the house once you've done that calculation and in that process.
So hypothetically, your next-door neighbor has a house that's 35 feet, that meets that definition. But now FEMA says you've got to elevate 14 feet, or 214 feet, and they're at 7 feet. So they can go 7 feet, they've got to elevate it 7 more feet. Yes.
You don't have to chop the roof off just because FEMA wants you to elevate.
Okay, that's, yeah, just to...
That was the reason to put that in the bylaw, which makes perfect sense.
It does.
In this case, it doesn't apply, the 40 feet maximum and 35 feet halfway up the ridge is, is going to be the standard that has to be achieved. It's measured from the average grade around the house, so in this case, as I look at the plans, the average grade is probably 16 thereabouts. Does that sound right, Paul?
16 to 17.
Yeah, okay. So that's where you measure it from.
And so how though, if the average grade is 10, and the house is elevated 10, do they still have to stay under 35, even with that elevation requirement?
Well, because you're building, because you're creating the height, so to speak, impact with new construction. It's different than if it were, it was already there.
And to complicate... The entire structure from the grade will be 35 feet or less to the midpoint.
To the midpoint, yeah.
Yep.
And to complicate the discussion a little bit, the reason for the clarification of from the gutter to the ridge halfway up is if you have, if you had an A-frame house, that would, you know, you could actually take a, have a 60-foot tall A-frame house, and that would make no sense, so...
I'm not sure, yeah, you're right.
But we, that's why we have a maximum...
Yeah, if you took the...
Flat roof.
The average...
It takes people messing with the roof being out of the equation.
Working for maximum.
That's best we could.
Exactly. So it's being covered in multiple different ways to, to minimize the maximum height.
There's a peak maximum, there's a midpoint maximum, try to capture everything. All right?
Yeah, I expect...
Yeah. So with that, if you could just state your name and your address so that Sue can get it down for the record.
Sure. Eric and Darcy Damon, 53 Oceanside Drive. We actually have supported this project. Art has lumber stored in our yard for the last three months, his contractor uses our yard to park their trucks. I supported the increase, or the addition of the third floor as well. There were some neighbors that were concerned about whether the application would result in a non-conformity. You folks have clarified tonight, that that is not the case. There are also neighbors concerned about an incident over the last couple of years, I think, that led to the change in the zoning language, where certain homeowner brought in Phil to increase the average height of the grade, so they, they wanted me to come and just get a picture for them and reassure them that this was going to be non-conforming in both of those regards. So we, as abutters, are satisfied and have no objection, and will share this information with the rest of the neighborhood.
But that means no sticky outy wrapped around porches or anything like that?
Um...
Do you have renderings yet?
So they are, I'll give him a chance to answer that. So an applicant's not required to submit renderings. Now, with that said, if there was a porch, meaning covered, that was proposed, because this house is so up against the setbacks, we would need to see that on the plan, and that would need to be part of the relief that we were granting. There is no proposed change to the footprint of the house here, and they would have to come back to change the left or, well, they'd have to come back to go further left or right on the house, and if they were doing it as part of this project, because it's more than 20 percent, we'd also need to know if they were going further front or back. So I... So, they could put a deck with no coverage on it, and wouldn't need to be here or necessarily tell us in advance, but a covered porch would need to be mentioned in this application, and there isn't one right now.
Under the Situate zoning bylaw, you can build an open deck or an open porch, as long as it's not covered, right up to your lot line. So you could have a deck that, this house could have a deck that went right over to the lot line with 54 or with 58. You know, a wraparound deck, right up to the lot line.
But when you cover it, it's different, then it's treated like the house.
Yeah, then it's considered to be part of the dwelling.
So, in the drawing that's before us, the existing dwelling, the outline of it represents the foundation, it could extend 18 inches with drip edge? Is it 18 inches?
Yes.
So, you've got, it's not technically the drip edge of the roof, because the roof can extend 18 inches into the setbacks, but-
Or eaves, or a bay window, or something like that. It doesn't touch the ground.
But, right. But it's, but, other than that, I mean, there is an open deck here, it says, open deck and stairs. They're not proposing changing it, but they could extend that if they wanted to.
Anyone else? All right.
Move to find that the proposed addition of a third story to the current pre-existing nonconforming dwelling at 56 Oceanside Drive, owned by Arthur McLaren Jr., and as presented by Paul Maribito's plan of Ross Engineering dated May 16, 2019, will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the current pre-existing nonconformity, current pre-existing nonconformities. Further, move that we grant a special permit to Mr. McLaren under Section 470.6F, Situate zoning bylaw, in that, inasmuch as the home will not, the total ground coverage, blah, 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 including backfilling grading, will not affect the water quality or natural drainage pattern on any water course.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just claim me that one.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Did I get the last two?
Our fifth application is that of Grove Street Realty Trust, Richard Spence, the trustee from 71 Williamsburg Lane in Situate, requesting a special permit finding under 48 Section 6 and/or Section 810.2 of the bylaw to allow the construction of additions to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 273 Country Way in Situate, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Greg Morse, Morse Engineering, representing the applicant, Grove Street Realty Trust, Richard Spence, trustee. Richard's with us tonight. Just right into the record, this is a request for a special permit or finding to allow an expansion on a single-family home of greater than 20 percent floor area. The house in this case is located at 273 Country Way, it was constructed about 1849. The lot itself is fully conforming, it is in the R2 zoning district, but the structure is nonconforming. It's nonconforming with respect to the front yard setback, existing at 27.1 feet, 30 feet being the requirement. The proposal here is to leave the front box of this house in place, but to take off the back piece of the house, construct a new two-story addition with an attached garage with a master above that. The existing house is 1,646 square feet, the proposed house addition brings it to a total of 2,764, which represents a 68 percent increase in floor area. All of the proposed additions comply with the setbacks, we're not decreasing the nonconformity with the front because we're not touching the front of the house.
Greg, Elms is a way that's laid out on a plan, so, recorded at the registry of deeds, so you would have to comply with the setback requirement from Elms, which is a front yard setback requirement, so it'd be 30 feet. So your plan mentions that as a sideline, side yard setback, but it's also a front yard. So you've got effectively two front yard setbacks?
So, we, we held a side yard setback on it. Elms Lane is a private way, it is shown entirely on the Steverman property, but we didn't think that it met the definition of a way under the subdivision control law, which is what the zoning bylaws refer to for front lot line. So we weren't sure that a front yard setback would apply in this case to it.
And what is the definition of way under the subdivision control law?
The, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there, sorry. I'm just opening up here. Well, to be issued endorsement for, say, an approval not required plan, the way would have to be of suitable width, grade, and character of construction for access. And, and we did not think that it met that criteria.
So, of suitable width for?
For the intended use. So we did not see it as meeting that definition. Just open up front here. Lot line front. Dividing a street is the front lot line, and the definition of street in your bylaw, any street or way providing legally sufficient frontage for a division of the land in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 81L. So, we didn't see that it would meet that criteria. We have a record plan, this is the layout of Elms Lane, is a road that is partially paved primarily to provide a driveway to the gutter out back, but we didn't think it met the definition for being divisible.
Greg, we're kind of splitting hairs here, so I give you my apology in advance.
Yep.
Having said that, we have held people to front yard setback requirements on paper streets that were fully vegetated, that were, had, you know, elm trees and oak trees growing in them, even though it's, I mean, this, this actually exists on the ground versus just on a plan. In addition to that, it is on a plan that's recorded at the registry of deeds. Frontage in the zoning bylaw, that portion of a lot fronting upon and having rights of access to a way providing legally sufficient frontage for a division of land under blah, 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 81L, which is your, your thing. That's, that's their access to their garage. You've got, they've got this, the Lally property, 273, or Spence property now, has, has frontage off of Elms Lane, that's how they got to their garage, in addition to the frontage on Country Way. It, their driveway is off of Elms. That's how they access the property. Mrs. Lally was my bus driver, that's where she used to park her bus. You know, going back to my days at Central School. So, so, you know, again, the, my reading of the bylaw and my reading of the statute is that you have two front yard setbacks that you would have to comply with. Having said that, you have an existing garage that you're proposing to raise, that garage is currently, looks like it's about 6 feet from the lot line, give or take?
Yeah.
Just in the ballpark, I'm not-
Half of that 15-foot space.
Yeah.
Seven and a half feet.
And you're proposing to eliminate that encroachment, and your proposed addition will be encroaching into the front yard setback at 24.1 feet?
Correct.
Whereas 30 is required, you're going from 6 to 24.1.
Correct.
It's a good thing that garage is there. I agree, I mean, love or hate that portion of the bylaw and the side-street-front business, especially where this isn't, to the extent this way dead-ends, it dead-ends, it appears in some town property back there, I think this is a way, I think that's a 30-foot setback. I don't think this is a new nonconformity, because you're raising that garage, and there is a garage in this addition, I think that's very strong, so, yeah, that would be my concern, just fixing the plan, but other than that, I feel good about what you're doing.
Yeah, that, what, what I would ask you to do is just reflect on your plan, the setback of the, submit a new plan showing the current setback of the garage, again, just, you know, and then, that the garage is of course going to be raised, and then we, we already have the plan that shows the setback of the addition, and then just reflect that there's a 30, 30-foot setback from the, from the layout, from the Elms Lane, yeah.
Also, the rear yard setback, because the side yard to the subtly side yard is now a rear yard.
Yeah.
And you've got that radius, radius on the-
Absolutely. So yeah, revise the building envelope setbacks.
Yeah.
And provide that setback, absolutely, I can do that.
And we apologize for making, but make other people do it, it's the way we're, the way we kind of do it, yeah.
Sure, I understand.
Ed, anything else?
No, I completely concur, I would have argued that it was a way as well, I mean, I, but I do like the, the fact that you're reducing that encroachment on the way significantly.
Yeah, and I think we get, we do it to ourselves, because we always call it a front yard setback, and again, love or hate that section of the code, the code's not set up as a front yard, it's a setback from streets or ways.
Is that addition, is that going to be the garage?
Yeah.
And are you going to access it off of Elm?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't, yeah, it's, that's, I think that's the statute.
Is there a historic structure concern here because of the part that's being taken down?
Nope.
I think we're not taking it down.
So, proposed raise and rebuild.
That part is being taken down.
Right.
Is it a total, do you have to go in front of the historical board if it's a total, raising and reconstruct, so the fact that they're saving the main portion of the house?
I, my experience has been, in a couple of cases where this has happened, the board would need to hear about it, but the board will allow this to forward.
I think in the-
There was one recently done on Beaverland Road down near the harbor, kind of similar to this.
In extreme caution, I would advise them before you take it down, because you don't want to get into trouble after the fact.
Yeah, don't, don't neglect to touch that base.
Bob, anything else?
Nope.
All right. Anyone for the audience for this one? No? All right. That, a, I will make a motion to find that the proposed additions at 273 Country Way do not create any new, and to the extent they intensify any existing nonconformities, such nonconformities shall not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, provided they are built in accordance with the plan submitted by Morse Engineering and dated 5/21/19, excuse me, and with the condition that a revised plan being submitted, which corrects the setback along Elms Lane and the rear setback, and gives us those setback numbers.
Understood.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for saving the house.
Isn't, just curious, isn't, if you had a, if you have a way on a, on a plan like that, even though it doesn't access any properties, anyone who has a, has property on the way has rights in the way, right?
Yep.
That's why we have to call it a way, because it's on the plan.
Yes. Not, almost always someone who has property on the way has rights in the way, not-
I don't mean actually in the way, but the way, remember we wanted to abandon the way. We wanted to abandon the way down near Ely Ave.
Yes.
At one point.
And everybody in the subdivision had rights in that way, and so what happened was, you remember that Wally had your parents resurrect the corporation?
That was on Bull Rush, yeah, that was on Bull Rush.
Yeah.
Because he wanted to abandon the way on Bull Rush, but I was thinking down across from Ely Ave on-
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah. It was a subdivision.
That used to go straight, that used to go through to Mary Lane, I think, if I remember correctly, and we had to abandon it, and everyone who had a right in the way had to abandon their rights.
Had to sign off on that because they had, they had the rights.
On the Bull Rush, they actually had to revive, they, the way was never, never included because it was, that was a weird one, but Wally found it.
Yeah.
He was in a gutter, so.
We spent a lot of money at work searching titles on ways.
Yeah, it's, and it's a, it's like a niche area of the law, and-
Yeah, unfortunately mine.
That's awesome. Good, it's good, it's all good.
I'm fortunate to have you.
Fifth, sixth, sixth application, you're taking that one. You're taking that last one. Nice work, thank you for your service. Our sixth application, Amy Lagomarcino.
Lago Marcino.
Yes.
Lago Marcino, thank you.
I'm half Italian, so.
I'm all Irish.
I'm all Italian, I screwed it up. Of the Lago Marcino Trust at 272 North Montclair Avenue in Glen Allen, Illinois, requests a special permit finding under 48 Section 6 and 810.2 of the bylaw for relief necessary to allow the construction of an accessory shed on a pre-existing nonconforming property at 15A Collier Avenue in Situate.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent the Lago Marcinos, this obviously is Amy Lago Marcino, the homeowner, and you may remember this property and this project, because my colleague Anthony Penabianco was in front of you with a variance application in January. So you may remember that the clients hired a contractor to construct a 12-by-16-foot shed on the western portion of the property. The contractor did not obtain permits for that, and as a result, was appropriately shut down, and in an attempt to rectify that, we submitted an after-the-fact variance application. You may remember that this lot is very oddly shaped with minimal frontage, it's a pork-chop lot, and you essentially can't build anything on this lot without encroaching into any of the setbacks. Despite, despite my colleagues' best efforts, the board expressed its view that it was not willing to grant a variance under those circumstances, but did suggest that we come back to the board and submit a special permit application relocating, well, first, reducing the size of the shed from 12 by 16 to 8 by 8, and then relocating it on the eastern portion of the property, and that's what we've done. We're proposing an 8 by 8-foot shed on the eastern portion of the property, the only open space available at the end of the, at the end of the existing cobblestone driveway. I can go into greater detail, the properties in the R3 zoning district, it's lots not conforming, the structure is nonconforming, the existing dwelling encroaches, it's into the rear setbacks approximately 4.5 feet from the rear lot line, and we're locating the shed in the only location where we can. It too, well- It too, while it meets the sideline setback, will be encroaching into the rear yard setback, but we setback further than the house, so it's 5.5 feet from the rear lot line. The shed's an allowable residential accessory use structure. I can get into more detail of the bylaw. It's an attractive shed. You may remember at the last hearing that there were butters here who had expressed concerns about what had been proposed previously. There are no butters this evening, as far as I can tell, and we've received no letters from anyone who has any issues with this. So we're asking the board for a Section 6 finding, or if not a Section 6 finding, a special permit allowing this 8 by 8 foot accessory use shed on the eastern portion of the property.
I was hoping to tab it untold to distract all the neighbors.
What's that?
I said, did you open a tab at untold to distract all the neighbors?
Yes.
Excuse me, Adam, is this the proposed shed or just...
It is the proposed, that's what it's going to look like, yes.
Seems a bit smaller than the last one, right?
Yes.
I don't know how you're going to get your kayaks in and out.
The kayaks are going under the deck.
Love it.
Oh, there you go, see?
That was during, so after you were in, there was a period of concern regarding kayak storage that spread through the town.
My concern...
I think we had three more.
Was for poor Anthony Panobianco. I was worried, he was, his head was sore after he left the meeting.
We have that effect on people.
He was forewarned, by the way, and not, I should say, I thought it was, knowing that the board's history, I thought it was an appropriate application to submit, but I recognize that the board was not willing to entertain it.
Lack of kayak storage is not...
But we're here now. We're here now.
Hopefully, we are entertaining.
I mean, so I don't have a lot of experience on the board with a new, albeit relatively minor, structure detached, going into a setback area, albeit less than the encroachment that exists with the home.
I...
And I'm not sure how much it costs.
I'm trying to recall, we had one up on, is it Kent Street that goes out to Third Cliff at the end of Gilson?
It's Driftway.
Driftway. Right at the top of Gilson, across the street, there was an existing shed, and then they wanted to relocate it.
I used to live there.
I think if the encroachment was greater than the encroachment, the existing encroachment of the house, I'd be more concerned.
Sure.
But they, in theory, by the way we have done these things in the past, if they put a little roof all the way across to the house.
I like that point.
Like a carport for my kayaks?
I'm not suggesting, oh, yo, look at that.
As a matter of right, they could connect...
With a little roof.
With a roof.
Right.
From the shed to the house and pull it back to four and a half feet.
And it would be gale-conformant.
But it's absurd. That would lead to an absurd result.
Right, 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 right. We require them to build more just to make it allowable, which is absurd.
Something that would necessarily be useful or aesthetically pleasing.
I agree.
Furthermore, they were in front of us.
Asked and answered.
And...
That's what I wanted to know.
So, they've done everything we asked them to do.
They have?
Kayaks are under the porch.
I was never really concerned about where the kayak did or didn't go.
We are. We don't want them blowing away. We live in Illinois.
I don't want them blowing away either. I don't think your neighbors want to blow them away.
You get an insurance policy with...
They do want to borrow them, I'm sure of them, so...
Oh, that'd be an interesting conversation. I'll come over for that.
Nice little rollers on it so they can roll right under.
Very nice.
You have anything else?
No, I have no, I, no.
Get a, if you look at the way...
He's still on the kayaks.
Yeah, I am. Look at the way the casket has moved, it rolled into the hearse. Just do that under the kayaks, right in.
What a morbid. Yes, morbid metaphor.
They actually make devices to move kayaks unrelated to hearse, by the way. I just wanted to let you know that.
They have those little two, the little V with the wheels.
That's right.
No hearse.
We don't need to involve mortuary.
Bob, do you have anything else, potentially on a different topic?
Well, yes, of course. What topic would you like?
No, related to this, but not necessarily dead people and kayaks.
Anything under 200 square feet does not require rebuilding permit.
Look at that.
First one did not require a permit.
I'll save you the amount of effort and cost.
There you go. All right.
It does have to be setbacks or...
Or you got to come here and get us to vote like we're about to vote.
And given the proximity of the neighbors, they're well advised to get relief from this board and to have that at the ready.
I totally agree.
When the neighbors come calling.
Yeah. Get this thing filed and let those 20 days run, baby.
But they did come a-callin', and they're not here tonight, so we presume that perhaps the remedy has been discussed with the neighbors and...
I'm a good neighbor.
And you're a good neighbor and they're good neighbors and...
All right. Do you have a motion?
Move to find that the proposed shed and its location in accordance with the, excuse me.
That's okay. Here you go.
Plan dated May 1st, 2019 of Richard Hood of McKenzie Engineering Group, which shed will be located 5.5 feet from the rear lot line and eight feet from the side yard setback is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure at 15A Collier Ave in Situate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Six applications in 55 minutes.
You like that?
I think that's our record.
I'm not good at a lot of stuff, but I'm pretty good at a couple things. I like it, it's got a rhythm to it.
Thanks for, thanks for coming back. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Any chance we could get a draft for that one? A decision for that one? That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
I'll take that one.
Yeah, I saw it.
You've already got it.
It lies beyond your years.
Do we have any minutes to approve? Thank you very much.
Do we have any minutes to approve?
We've been too busy with building permits for a minute.
Move to adjourn?
No, so, sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, we, just quickly, we do not have any applications, I'm going to skip to the second item, we do not have any applications for July.
That is correct.
Yep, so we're not going to have a meeting in July, so that's okay.
When is the 3rd Thursday in August?
The 3rd Thursday in August.
I do not have my telephone with me.
I do. The 3rd Thursday in August is, ooh, the 15th. August 1st is a Thursday. The 15th of August will be our next meeting, provided we get some applications, which I imagine we will.
I can't imagine.
And that'll be August 15th.
And I'll actually probably be around.
I'll probably be here, too.
And I might not be.
Hopefully Tom will be.
Yeah, and on that note, we have on our sheet here to discuss the vacant ZBA position. It's supposed to be a board of five. It has been a board of four for a while now. I would propose that I draft a letter to our friends on the Board of Selectmen, asking them to...
What I found interesting is they already, I think they already put something out that there was a vacancy.
Yes.
They are seeking...
They posted it.
They are seeking people to apply for open positions that are in different boards or on different boards, but I haven't seen anything about zoning.
I think the newspaper indicated that there was a zoning open.
So I got a town email that was advisory and something else and not zoning.
Yes, that's what I saw.
I did see it on one document, but maybe it didn't end up on the final.
Right.
So I think a letter to the Selectmen...
I'll just get a write-up letter, say, hey, and we'll see what happens there, because, yeah, it's, especially in the summer and the winter, and applications that carry over, and it's not going to be long before we see another 40B, and so it's good to have an extra set of eyes.
Someone's got a conflict, like tonight, if, six applications, if one of us had a conflict...
That could cause a little logjam.
Rule of necessity, yeah.
Yep.
And to the viewing public, if you've enjoyed this show brought to you by Situate Community Television, you can be here live every 3rd Thursday.
Yeah, good seats, good seats.
Good seats are still available. Act now.
All right.
Post your letter to the Situate Board of Selectmen, encouraging them to hold interviews.
Yeah, I will draft it for you. All right, then, do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.